Moving on, we will go to item number two, which is alternate source of water supply request for proposal introductory presentation by WISE. And we'll turn this over to Mr. Redden.
Thank you, Mayor. So before we get started on this, I gotta get this off my chest. Tony has given me the courage to admit that I too cried when Jack in the Box opened its door.[26.43][26.43](laughter) But, and I was the third customer. So Mayor, I'd like, I'd like Mayor Town Council, I'd like to welcome members from Denver Water, the City of Aurora, and the South Metro Water Authority, who will be presenting on the WISE project tonight. And as with the first presentations we had a few weeks ago, the intent of this is to public, to have this team present publicly the WISE project and talk about the project, the water characteristics and the costs, and then open it up for your questions and the public's questions. So like our last presentation, we had a 30-minute presentation by the groups, and then we'll close and open it up for questions. So with that, I'd like to introduce Mayor Tower from the City of Aurora to kick this presentation off.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. It's kinda nice to be on this side of the dais and questions are even okay. So we want to start by thanking you for giving us the opportunity to come and speak with you for a few minutes this evening. We are so excited about this idea that we're gonna tell you about. We think it's one of the neatest things to happen in Colorado in years. For several years now, a group of dedicated people from the South Metro Water Supply Association, Denver Water, and the City of Aurora have been working on a novel idea in the water industry: cooperation. Nothing more complex than that. But it's something that turns out to be very complicated when you go to implement it. So, the big question before us was how could all these different providers, 14 different providers in South Metro, Denver Water, and Aurora Water, all come together as separate entities, keep their autonomy, and still cooperate to provide the absolute lowest-cost, reliable water supply, not just for our citizens today, but also for their children? And after several years of working on it, we have a detailed idea that is ready for public consumption and that we're very excited to present to you tonight. And so with that, I'd like to ask our teams to come up and to give you a rundown on the WISE project.
Good evening, council and commission. My name's Charlie Crowe. I'm the manager of the Pinery Water and Wastewater District and a board member on the South Metro Water Supply Authority, and I was president of that authority from 2004 to 2010, through 2010. And we gave the mayor two slides, and he didn't use either of them, so (laughter) we'll, we'll go through his, his slides here. The WISE partnership, WISE stands for Water Infrastructure and Supply Efficiency Partnership, and the partnership is, as the mayor said, Denver Water, Aurora Water, and the South Metro Water Supply Authority. This partnership uses infrastructure that's already constructed. So the map before you shows Denver Water's service area in blue, Aurora's service area in, I guess it's kind of a tan color, and the South Metro service area in the other color. Water for this WISE project comes through, comes, comes to us in two directions: through Aurora's Prairie Waters Project, water diverted off the South Platte River up near Brighton and brought back to a treatment facility right by Aurora Reservoir; and also through Aurora's Rampart Pipeline, which is mountain supplies, also brought over to Aurora Reservoir and blended there and then distributed to Aurora's customers and hopefully to South Metro members as well. And key component, and you'll hear this theme throughout the evening, is we're using infrastructure, public investment that's already been made, facilities that have already been constructed in a broader manner than their original design intent, so we're using that already public investment more efficiently to bring water into our area. So the, the photo in front of you now is actually not an artist's rendering, it kind of looks like that when you, when you project it up. That's the Prairie Waters Treatment Facility. As of last week, it's been operational for a year. It's a portion of the Prairie Waters Project. The total Prairie Waters Project represents an investment of some $650 million by the City of Aurora. And the treatment processes employed at the now-called Peter Binney Water Purification Facility are similar to the treatment processes that you're constructing for your Plum Creek Water Treatment Reuse Project. Same kinds of challenges, taking water out of a river below a municipal area, and you've gotta treat it to, you know, to some very stringent standards. So part of the treatment process that Aurora has constructed consists of the largest ultraviolet train installed in the country. This particular part of the treatment process, when combined with, with ozone, is used to remove those very trace contaminants that aren't yet regulated, they're referred to in the industry as emerging contaminants. But Aurora took this step because I think we all know regulations are just getting tougher over time, and they've made this investment to, in, in their community to, so they can put out the, the best water possible. The, the Prairie Water System is staffed, as I mentioned, it's been operating for now over a year. Picture of their water quality laboratory, stringent standards, constant sampling, assurance that the water meets all required standards. We'll move a little bit closer to our geographic area, down south here, so this is the, the WISE project blown up in the southern area. Existing pipelines and facilities are shown in the solid colors. Consists of, as I mentioned, the Rampart Pipeline, which brings mountain supplies from Stranched Springs Reservoir over to Aurora Reservoir, that would be the brown pipeline. Shows the, the southern portion of the Prairie Waters Pipeline coming from Brighton down to the Binney Water Treatment Plant. And it shows in the darker green color, a pipeline that's been constructed along the 470 corridor by East Cherry Creek Valley Water and Sanitation District. The initial connection that needs to be constructed to, for South Metro to take deliveries of WISE water supplies is shown in the upper-right corner, the, the light-green line connecting to the pink line. Light-green line exists, that's Aurora's water distribution system, they've got pipelines that cross that pink line that's already out there. There's a small, relatively low-cost project to connect those two systems together, and South Metro can begin to take deliveries along the 470 corridor. The dashed lines represent the future infrastructure that South Metro members need to construct to take deliveries into our respective service areas. The dashed lines represent a varying level of, of engineering from very conceptual, you know, we need a pipeline between Castle Rock and the Pinery, to much more detailed engineering, particularly along the Chambers Corridor, bringing a pipeline down Chambers Road to Ruder Hess Reservoir. That project has been moved through about a 30 percent design level, and we're in easement acquisition at this point, and should be in final design next year. One of the key features of the WISE project is that, you know, the, the infrastructure to take, to bring water into the South Metro area along the 470 corridor already exists. The water rights are already owned by Denver and Aurora, and it allows us in South Metro to take our rather limited resources and focus on infrastructure that we need to build to connect our various communities together. Get into some terms of the agreement that you have. The, the agreement, we'll refer to this as the, as the first phase. The agreement provides for all members of the, the WISE partnership to have some benefit. As we've developed this project over the last several years and looked at modeling and engineering studies, first and foremost, since we're using, principally using infrastructure constructed by Aurora for Aurora, we've had to make sure that Aurora's needs are met in all years under all conditions, and we've met that requirement. Denver Water is interested in this WISE project, WISE partnership, as an emergency supply for their system. And in any emergency, the project is designed for Denver to take up to 15,000 acre-feet of water in, in any given year. But that's, hopefully, an infrequent occurrence. The agreement contemplates that it might happen periodically, that's why we've got the delivery schedule in the agreement that we do, but, but Denver's use is intended to be and planned to be for emergency purposes. The reason it's after 2020 is between now and 2020, there's some infrastructure that needs to be constructed before Denver can even take deliveries of WISE project water. South Metro Water Supply Authority, the agreement contemplates an average delivery of 10,000 acre-feet per year, as measured in 10-year blocks beginning in 2020. Between now and 2020, there's a ramp-up period where we begin to take smaller amounts of water as we're able to construct infrastructure for delivery to the South Metro members. And as we studied the project, modeled the project, looked at needs for, for all three members, Denver, Aurora, and South Metro, we've discovered ways for this project to grow to an annual average of 60,000 acre-feet. That's not the agreement in front of you, but this, it's an important point to, to know that this project has the potential to grow and be much larger. So we'll talk about the agreement and some key features of the agreement. First, it's permanent. This is a permanent water delivery agreement for renewable water into the South Metro communities. Through the engineering work we've done, we've identified the necessary infrastructure that needs to be constructed for South Metro members and Castle Rock to take deliveries. The rate process is, rate-setting process is well-defined, it's transparent, and we're using a cost-of-service ratemaking methodology. For those of you who have been involved in water rates, that's the same ratemaking methodology that the town of Castle Rock uses in setting rates for its customers. While the delivery schedules under WISE are variable by year and by month, the governance in the agreement contemplates that we'll meet annually and that we'll know pretty well on an annual basis what the delivery schedule will look like for the following year. Adjustments will, will necessarily have to be made, but we'll have a pretty good approximation going into the water year of what we can expect and plan for. The water will be delivered to South Metro through a master meter, and then South Metro Water Supply Authority will be responsible for distribution to our various members. And an important component of this agreement is that the water supplies are reusable. This is just like the Denver Basin groundwater that we've all been relying on for years, and all of us have invested or are investing in reuse systems, since that's water supply that we already own, and it's some of the cheaper water we can get, just like your, Plum Creek Water Treatment Facility recapture program that you've got underway. And so the reusability of the WISE water means that those investments we've made in, in reuse facilities over the years will continue to have value for our communities. Cost. This one's, you know, been a, a big one for us in the, in the discussions with, with Denver and Aurora to make sure we understand what's in the cost, what it means, how, how it will be changed in the future. As I described, it's a cost-of-service ratemaking methodology that's been used to develop the costs. We, South Metro, have been through the models and are comfortable that they're fair and appropriate. And the cost is made up of a couple of components. So when you see in the agreement, the bottom-line cost is $5.38 a thousand gallons, delivered to South Metro. It's important to note, and when you compare it to other alternatives, that the water cost in that agreement is $1.60 a thousand. The rest of the cost is operations of the facilities, operations and maintenance of the facilities necessary to bring that water into the South Metro communities, and a capital recovery charge. Aurora and Denver have made a huge investment in their water systems, we're paying for the privilege of using them, that's the capital recovery charge. So the total cost to the communities is $5.38. But an important component is the reusability of the supply. So once we get it into our systems, then we're able to reuse it and recapture that water. So for every thousand gallons we buy, depending upon the efficiency of our various reuse systems, maybe we end up with 2,000 gallons for our communities. I mentioned earlier that we know what infrastructure needs to be constructed for South Metro to take deliveries, and we have cost estimates for that infrastructure. In the agreement, there's a payment due from South Metro to the WISE partnership early next year of $412,000. That's for construction of that initial interconnect between Aurora's distribution system and the pipeline along 470. There's also a subscription fee of just under $16 million in payable in eight easy payments, annual payments by the South Metro members that choose to participate. And this pays for a connection between DIA, between Denver's system at DIA and the Prairie Water System, and for expansion of some Prairie Waters facilities earlier than Aurora would need them. In addition to those costs, which are, which are upfront costs, we have a bottleneck in the system, so for South Metro to take advantage of the full deliveries of 10,000 acre-feet on an annual average, we need to make a bigger connection between the Prairie Waters Binney Treatment Plant and the pipeline along 470. That's currently estimated to be about $35 million. And then South Metro is responsible for distribution to our members, those cost estimates are in development, and we are currently in negotiations to acquire that East Cherry Creek Valley Pipeline along 470. And there are cost numbers out there for that pipeline, all of those discussions are in negotiation, in, in executive session, and I'm sure your utilities director would be happy to fill you in on, on the status of those negotiations in an executive session. So what does this project mean to, to our communities, to this South Metro area? And I'll just summarize a few very key points. This is a permanent agreement for a renewable, reusable supply for South Metro. It's got a relatively low cost of entry. We're still talking millions of dollars, but compared to other projects that, that we've looked at as, as, as an authority, you know, this project has far less sticker-shock than others. We don't need to go acquire water rights, we don't need to bring pipeline, build pipelines all over the, the communities up north, those already exist. It puts us in a regional partnership with two very large, very experienced water utilities. And a point that we often lose in our discussions because we're focused on the fact that we're getting deliveries through the Prairie Water System and that water's down, down near Brighton on the Platte, we lose sight of the fact that this project gives us in the South Metro community access to two very diversified water portfolios. When you think about where the water comes from that ultimately makes its way into the WISE partnership, it starts in the Blue River, in Dillon Reservoir, comes down the Platte, and is in the Denver Metro area. It's in the Arkansas, brought up through Aurora's system. It starts over right near Independence Pass in Aurora's Home State Reservoir Project. We gain access to a very diversified water portfolio as part of this project, which should give us some comfort, you know, as we look at our, at our systems that are focused on Plum Creek or Cherry Creek, very small parts of the state, we're now gaining access to very large part of the state. The other feature of those two water portfolios, Denver's and Aurora's, is they work very well together. In a dry year, Aurora is bringing water in from their system, and they're bringing it up through Prairie Waters to meet the needs of their customers. Denver, in a dry year, is using its mountain supplies, water that is reusable. It's, it, after Denver uses it, it ends up in the Platte, and it's available to South Metro. In a more wet year, Denver is using its Platte River supplies, which aren't reusable, but all of Aurora's supplies are reusable, but it's a wetter year and Aurora doesn't need all of the capacity in Prairie Waters, so there's water for South Metro. These systems, and as we've studied these systems and looked at them, they work remarkably well together. It's very complementary, and it's just, you know, kind of fortuitous that, that that's how it works. And lastly, this is a project that can grow over time, to meet the needs of our growing communities, or if our communities aren't growing, are diminishing groundwater supplies. We know we've got a growing need for water in either, in either case, and these, this project has the ability to grow. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to our two partners, Denver and Aurora, for
Good evening. I'm Mark Pfeiffer, I'm the Director of Aurora Water. With me is Jim Lockhead, the CEO from Denver Water. And we would just like to make a few closing comments, as Charlie indicated. What sets WISE apart? I mean, why do we think this is the right way to go? Besides the fact that it's a regional approach, I think all parties have come to the conclusion that in Colorado, water is too scarce and infrastructure is too expensive not to cooperate in its gathering, use, treatment, and supply. That's the wave of the future. As Charlie also alluded to, between Denver and Aurora, we have over 150 years of experience gathering that water, storing it, piping it, treating it, and delivering it to our customers through state-of-the-art facilities that we're very proud of, and we, we have the capacity, the capability of taking on additional customers. We own the adjudicated water rights, and we can't underestimate the importance of that. It's very costly to go through water court, it takes a lot of time, and sometimes the result isn't what you anticipated. These water rights are already adjudicated and already to be placed in the pipe and, and moved south. We've constructed much of the infrastructure, and Charlie talked about that, Prairie Waters Project has been operational now for a year. It did come in, and we're very proud to say, $100 million under budget. We've had contract delivery obligations, especially Denver, for, for many decades. And that's important because we've, we've been a very reliable source for those outside contract entities. We've always met, both Denver and Aurora, our long-term commitments, and certainly intend to in the future. We'll be here as partners for generations to come. Again, we're municipal water suppliers. Our core business is the provision of a water supply. You'll know where to find us 10 years from now, 20 years from now, 50 years from now, if you have a problem under a contract. We will always be there serving our citizens and meeting our contractual obligations. We'll also always meet all regulatory requirements, the water we supply through WISE is the same water we provide to our citizens, the same quality, and we're very serious about meeting those requirements imposed by EPA and the Water Quality Control Division. We have a strong in conservation, environmental, and, and growth ethic, and ultimately, when you look at WISE, it's sort of the, the quintessential, if you will, conservation project. It make, it maximizes the efficient use of the resources that we all already have. It will, as Charlie indicated, have a rate that's based on the American Waterworks Association ratemaking principles that Castle Rock currently employs, that we employ, that Denver employs, that's very transparent, that everyone will have an opportunity to comment upon and see what the inputs are in order to come up with the annual rate. And certainly, there, there will be no ball hidden in that regard.
Did you want to do, do this one, or? Okay. Turn it over to Jim.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's my pleasure and I appreciate the opportunity to appear for, before you. My name is Jim Lockhead, CEO of Denver Water. From Denver Water's perspective, it's really a great opportunity for us to join in a regional partnership with Aurora and South Metro to, to analyze this, this project, and it's really, I think, an illustration of the type of innovation that can come through regional cooperation, through governmental, public agencies, and some of the support that we've received, I think is illustrative of that. I was struck when I came in tonight with the banner downstairs with the town of Castle Rock's Water Agenda for Your Future. It has clarity and purpose, it sets forth a very understandable agenda for a sustainable water future for this community, and I believe that it fits well with the type of regional partnership that, that we bring to you tonight. I was also struck by the, the population growth in the, in the chief's retirement cer, you know, ceremony about how this town has grown, and the obligation of you as council members to, to create a sustainable future for this community. And we'd be pleased to participate with you on a regional basis to, to achieve that sustainable future. From Denver Water's perspective, we have a, a limited service area, but we also have, I believe, an obligation to partner with other agencies to resolve regional issues in the front range and, in, in the metro area. And certainly finding a solution to non-renewable water supplies in the South Metro area is an important regional agenda, of which we're, we're pleased to be a part. And finally, the, the agenda of cooperation and partnering, I think, is illustrated by a milestone agreement that Denver Water reached with 35 different Western Slope Agencies, and which has achieved the support of the Western Slope for this project. Certainly, if we can work with South Metro, Town of Castle Rock, and all your partners to achieve a, a sustainable regional water supply and, and fully use the reusable flows that we have from our system, that is a benefit to the Western Slope, it's a benefit to the environment, and it is an example of regional cooperation that, that the governor has endorsed. And so it's a, it's a concept that is, is really a model of, of regionalism, really for the whole country. So we're, we're pleased to be a part of it and, and happy to provide whatever information you need to, in your consideration of this alternative.
And with that, I think we're ready to field any questions.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Ron, did you want to add anything at this, at this point, before I open it up to council for questions?
No, Mayor, just like to point out that we've had four presentations, all of them under 30 minutes, so that's, that's a milestone.
That's the record. Well done. Okay, so what, what we'll do is we'll go ahead and start with council questions, and then we'll go to commission questions, and then I will go ahead and open it up to the, the public. So to, to start off, if there, if council has any questions at this point.
I didn't understand the breakdown, you said, what was the first thing gonna be?
It's gonna be council.
Okay. I've got a lot of questions, and I'll try and limit them, because I understand that's, we're limited on time.
Okay.
Are we, do we have a formal agreement now? Is this a formal proposal with cost figures and all that, or is this a concept at this point in time?
Mayor, I guess you guys can go ahead and answer those correctly, it's, or I can take it.
It's a formal proposal at this time. It, it's certainly subject to additional negotiation as the various boards and councils review it.
Okay, so there is costing information that we can do analysis on?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I know that we're talking about South Metro, we're talking about a bunch of municipalities here. Do we have commitment from all the municipalities at this point in time, or what do we have?
That, that's a very good question. We're, we're, we're in the process with all of the other South Metro members, we've just now gotten the WISE partnership agreement in a form that it's been available for the public, so all of our member boards are beginning to discuss it. We have pretty solid commitments from 13 of the 15 South Metro members that they would like to participate, and when we add up everybody's requests, we fully subscribe, or actually slightly oversubscribe, the 10,000 acre-feet on average. the 10,000 acre feet on average.
Now, you mentioned drought years. And in an earlier draft agreement, I was concerned that during the drought years, we, we in Castle Rock, we in South Metro were not guaranteed delivery. What's the concept now?
The concept is that we get an average delivery of 10,000 acre feet per year as measured in 10-year blocks. Within those 10-year blocks, there may be up to two years of zero deliveries. That's what's contemplated in the agreement. So it's incumbent on the South Metro members to figure out a way to firm up those supplies, either with other water supplies that we already own, wells we've turned off during years when WISE Water's available and we turn them back on when it's not available, or through storage. And our members are looking at surface water storage, Rueter Hess Reservoir in particular, and Aquifer Storage and Recovery.
As an ad lib, that doesn't sound like an equal partnership. I understand the planned cost for storage in Rueter Hess. Is that correct? Your plan?
As I just described, our members need to firm up the supplies as fits within each individual membership, you know, members' water systems. Some of our members need some storage, others don't need additional storage beyond what they already have. I know Castle Rock owns storage in, in Rueter Hess and...
And Councilman, I can state, in the South Metro, some folks don't need storage. Castle Rock plans to use storage.
They plan on using Rueter Hess?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Now, we know that the Army Corps of Engineers has put up a, at least a temporary roadblock. What happens if that roadblock holds? Do we still, what do we do?
Well, Councilman, as we've talked in the past, when, when we bought into Rueter Hess Reservoir, we only had two, two waters identified that we could put in there. That was our groundwater supply. So we can actually pump wells and put it into Rueter Hess, probably through Cherry Creek. Or our return flows, our treated wastewater return flows can be put in there. We had not identified any surface water at the time. So as part of the process, when we find surface water that we want to put in there, we have to take it back through the Army Corps process to look at, is there any impacts and what any mitigation, if any, we have to do. We're in, so WISE Water became apparent, we knew where that water was, and the South Metro Partnership has been working with Aurora and Denver and the Army Corps for WISE Water. So again, any water we put in there has to go through this, but we've identified the WISE Water sooner than any other water. So that's currently in the process and we'll go out for a public review and comment shortly. So to answer your question, I'm sorry.
If I might just add, Ron, we had an opportunity to meet with the Corps of Engineers today to talk about the WISE deliveries to Rueter Hess. And they indicated, well, the storage is certainly allowed under the terms of the permit that was granted, subject to the additional review that Ron referenced. They didn't see any fatal flaws of, of any nature and they actually said we, you know, welcome any calls to us that Castle Rock would like to make to further discuss it.
Yeah. I have not seen that on public record, but I'd like to see that sometime. Now, as I understand, you're delivering purified water to us and we're going to stow it probably in Rueter Hess. We face two problems. One is, it's the city that we're facing evaporation. The second thing is, are we going to have to purify that as we bring it out of Rueter Hess?
Mayor, Town Council, if any water that we put into Rueter Hess that's been treated will have to be retreated, that will have to be retreated. So that is correct.
So it has to be treated afterwards. So we have to build a treatment plant?
Yes.
And is that the responsibility of WISE, Castle Rock?
That is the responsibility.
Who the users are or what?
It's the responsibility of the Town of Castle Rock, but we may be partnering with other South Metro members such as Parker Water. We, we do have the ability to bypass Rueter Hess and that'll be more of an operational look. Obviously, if we can take that treated water straight into distribution, we will do so. But in order to build up that supply of water to meet our peak summer demand, some of that water will be going into Rueter Hess and will have to be retreated.
You, you may already told me this, but you know I'm deaf. So the question is, if we bypass Rueter Hess, what are our plans? Do we have a site that we're going to go to or is it going to be direct flow into Castle Rock?
If, if we bypass Rueter Hess, that treated water directly would come into Castle Rock's distribution system.
Okay. Thank you, Ron. I've got a few more questions if it's okay. I've got the question about evaporation. We know about that. You talked about some pricing there. That pricing is coming down to Rueter Hess. So we will probably have to add additional cost on if we do build that plant?
Councilman, that's correct. So we have, we now have the four proposals to get the water to Chambers and E470. We will have to add in our extra expense to get that, the infrastructure to Castle Rock and the actual O&M. So that'll be part of the overall evaluation. What we've asked from the folks participating in this is get it to this point and then we'll take it from there. But the cost will be included, the cost for the water from the proposals and, and our cost to get it to Castle Rock.
And then I've got two more questions. The one question is, what happens if we don't need the water in a certain years? Do we bank it at Rueter Hess or, or what do we do?
That's the idea of, of storage in a reservoir. It gives you a fat spot in the pipeline because you don't really know where your demands are going to be. So it gives you a place to park it until you need it.
Yeah. And then, but we expect evaporation or something in excess of 10% and so that should make the price increase, I would think.
Right. We, we are taking that into account in our evaluation.
Okay. My last question was, I seem to recall reading something about restrictions that we are not allowed to try an independent source anytime in the future. Is that correct?
Well, it's not quite correct, but I'll turn it over.
Pardon?
I'll let these guys answer that.
Councilman, I think what the reference is, is to a provision in Denver Water's agreement with the Western Slope that would have any, any South Metro entity that would subscribe to agree to similar terms. What Denver Water committed to with the Western Slope was essentially that we agreed not to develop further water resources on the Western Slope except in partnership with the West Slope. And in point of fact, what that reflects is reality. I think that we've seen 1041 and other roadblocks that have been put in place by the Western Slope, by, by other communities from which we would like to import water. And from Denver Water's perspective, what we have found is that finding ways to partner with the Western Slope to develop additional supplies is the easiest path forward to being able to, to, to manage our future in cooperation with them. And so I would, I would frankly argue that that provision enhances the ability of the, the Denver Metro front range to work with the West Slope to additional, to develop additional West Slope supplies.
I've got one more question that was generated by that. The negotiations with the Western Slope, is that this partnership of WISE, Denver, and Aurora, negotiating as a team with the Western Slope? Or who's doing the negotiation with the Western Slope?
The agreement with the West Slope is an agreement simply between Denver Water and the West Slope. And, and really, one of the things it does is it clears the way for us to use our renewable supplies to put into this partnership arrangement.
So in a way, that puts handcuffs on us for perpetuity, that we can't, we can't seek water anyplace else.
I don't think so. Again, I, and whether the Town of Castle Rock is in position to do a transmountain diversion from the West Slope, again, the reality is it's not going to be done without obtaining federal, state, local permits, which is going to involve cooperation with the West Slope in any event. So again, I think it simply reflects the reality of what the future's going to be for future development of...
I don't know the future either, but that doesn't look very good right now. Thank you.
Yeah. And I, I know that there's some interest in South Metro about possible participation in Flaming Gorge Pipeline. That would not apply to a Flaming Gorge Pipeline. There's specific reference in the Denver West Slope Agreement to a joint-use project with the Western Slope and that's, so those, those discussions are clearly still on the table. I don't think that any of that is precluded by this agreement or the Town of Castle Rock's participation in the, in the WISE partnership.
Well, I sit on Dr. Cog and this is one thing that bothers me in what we're talking about right now, is that basically we're locked into a system that can inhibit our growth. In other words, basically Denver, Aurora will control the growth of Douglas County by adjusting the water valve accordingly.
Denver Water certainly and Aurora are committed to live by the contractual obligations that we would have under this, under this partnership arrangement. We have been providing water to a growing Denver Metro area now for 100 years and I don't think we're, we're, we're looking to, to limit our ability to continue to provide that service in any way.
That's, that's past history and what we're talking about is the future and that's a concern to me. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
That's all right. We're going to, we're going to have to move on. Thanks. Thank you, Councilman Prokopio. Are there any other questions? Councilman McGreen?
I just have a really quick question. For Castle Rock's participation in the WISE partnership, I, I think I calculated between the interconnect, the subscription of eight payments and the Benny, did I say that correctly? Benny Connection, about $51.5 million. Is that accurate?
That sounds like the right, right range of numbers without adding them up myself, but that's a cost to be shared amongst the South Metro members that participate. So they're not all Castle Rock.
Not solely Castle Rock then. It's all, all the, okay. Great. Thanks for clarifying that.
Councilman Hammelmann?
The $5.38, for what time period is that period, what time period does that number cover? And then do I understand that that is recalculated? That's starting at some point on an annual basis?
Right. It's, it's, that was actually a 2011 determination based on costs incurred in that timeframe. That would be adjusted annually based on either the cost of raw water increasing, in the case of Denver, or their operational cost of Aurora increasing, the same way, you know, we put those inputs into a model for our ratepayers.
Thank you.
Got two more questions? You can tell me no.
Oh, I'm not going to say no.
Two questions, okay. Two questions are quick, I think. In the original draft agreement, it talked about a, what was it, a five-year period? And then there was no afterthought of continuing the partnership. In other words, we were going to contribute to building the infrastructure, we needed to do it, but then we didn't know what the future holds. I presume that that's been taken out of this, the latest agreement?
I, I, go ahead. Well, Councilman Prokopio, that, that's actually been addressed. That was one of our concerns early on and that's no longer an issue.
And then the other issue in the original agreement talked about South Metro indemnifying the city of Denver with respect to the Blue River water suit. That ring a bell with anybody?
Not on the Blue River suit. It doesn't ring a bell.
I'm, I'm not familiar with any provision that...
Yeah, that was in the original agreement, I'm pretty sure. We can double-check with the, our council.
Councilman, as far as I... Councilman, as far as I know, the only indemnity in the agreement that's before you this evening is an indemn, a typical operational indemnity where South Metro indemnifies Denver and Aurora if they're...
And that's, does that end the agreement now, the current agreement?
It is in the current version of the agreement, but it's unrelated to the Blue River's...
It's been reshaped since the last time?
I'm sorry?
It's been reshaped since the last time?
Yes, it has been refined.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Just, I just want to clarify Councilwoman Green's question. So the numbers that showed up in the cover of a majority of the infrastructure, one of the key pieces is that pipeline, we, the Western Pipeline we refer to as the East Cherry Creek Pipeline, that didn't have a number in this presentation and that's what's currently under negotiations in which, in which we are, we usually go into exec session to talk about those costs. But there is an additional cost for that pipeline.
Okay. Great. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open it up to the Utilities Commission. If there's anyone on the Utilities Commission who would like to ask any questions at this time? Okay. All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open this up to the, the public. And I don't think I have anyone signed up right now. So this is a public hearing, so if anyone would like to ask questions or comment at this time, please feel free. And, okay. We do have a quick question back there. I would ask that, that if you, you could come up, thank you, gentlemen, if you could come up and just state your name for the record and whether you're a resident of Castle Rock?
I am. My name is Amy Graziano and I am a resident of Castle Rock. I live in the Meadows. I am a graduate student studying sustainability at the University of Denver and I'm curious about the program. I was wondering, now that the four proposals have been presented, what, what procedure are you all going to go forward? You know, what sort of policy analysis or, you know, other than money, what, how are you going to go about deciding which of the four projects we are going to go with? Or is it going to be a possibility that none of the four will be selected?
I think that, that's a great question. I believe also that that's going to be dealt with here in item number three on the agenda, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Redd. So if you just stay tuned, I think you'll get an answer to that question.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Anybody else would like to comment on this particular presentation and issue? And seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment and we'll bring it back to Mr. Redd.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. So Mayor, Town Council, you are correct. The next item, we'll go more into our process after tonight. But just to summarize quickly, we, we have a lot of work to do to look at these. We're looking at cost issues, we're looking at reliability, risks, how this, how these programs will work. We hope to get in front of council again with, with an update, probably be mid to late November. It's an awful lot of work. We have been meeting with different providers. So, but Heather will go into that when you're ready for the next, and the next item.
Okay. That sounds great. Thank you. And gentlemen, thank you so much for taking time out and presenting to us today. We really do appreciate that. We, we do have our work cut out for us here in the future, particularly Mr. Redd and those in, in his department. But we appreciate you all taking the time. Mr. Mayor, thank you for coming and presenting. And I think what we'll do is go ahead and move on to the, the next agenda item at this point.
All right.
Is we okay?
We're good.
Okay. So we'll move on to item number three, which is an update on the alternate source of supply procurement process. Mr. Redd?
Thank you, Mayor. I will turn this over to our Water Resource Engineer, Heather Beasley.
Good evening, Council, Commission, Mr. Mayor. Now that we've heard from all four of our potential water providers, I want to give you an update of what's happening now behind the scenes as we evaluate each of these potential water projects. I'll quickly revisit the goals of this request for proposals. I'm going to explain our analysis team and their, their roles in this analysis. I want to touch upon the budget for this whole process and our anticipated schedule. And then finally, I'll let you know where we're at in our analysis effort. So again, the, the purpose of this RFP is to identify a renewable and reusable source of water supply, up to 6,000 acre feet, delivered when the town needs it, dependent on growth, and where it needs it. At two possible locations, at E417 Chambers or directly into Rueter Hess, and at a water quality level acceptable to store in Rueter Hess Reservoir. From the proposals, the analysis team will identify the water providers, well, water provider or providers that bring the best value to the town and its customers. And all of this will culminate in a recommendation from the analysis team to Town Council for further concentrated negotiations. So our analysis team consists of... So our analysis team consists of several different members. We've got Lyons, Gaddis, Condon Hall, their special counsel for water law. They're going to analyze the risks associated with the water rights or the targeted water rights in each of the proposals. In concert with our special counsel will be WW Wheeler and Associates. The role there is to confirm the yield in each of the proposals, confirm the modeling assumptions, and then also do a general appraisal of the water rates in each of the proposals. Camp Dresser and McKee, they're also a water resources engineering. They've helped develop our operational model and that helps me to understand which water supplies work and when we need them. Red Oak Consulting is our utility rates and fees consultant. They're going to help us identify some of the financial indicators in each of the proposals like net present value, affordability, and then the total impact to the customer's utility bill over time. SAIC is our procurement process consultant. They've helped us throughout this process. They helped us develop the RFQ, the Request for Qualifications. They've helped us identify the shortlisted water providers. They helped us develop the Request for Proposals. So they'll continue to offer assistance and guidance through this procurement process. They also are serving as a QA QC role for any of the capital and operational tables that we put together that, that form the foundation for our financial analysis. And then we have the town staff and, and this is organization-wide. We have representatives from utilities, from customer, or I'm sorry, community relations, from the legal department and from the finance department. So for this effort, we've budgeted $120,000 out of the Water Resources Fund for our consultant For the, where we're at on this analysis is we're meeting with each one of the respondents. We want to clarify their proposals, make sure that we understand the water project the way they intended it, make sure that we understand their assumptions, that it went into the delivery of the water, when it, you know, when it comes, make sure we understand the assumptions that go into the, the costs they've put in to the project. We're also gathering data that's related or relevant to the water rights, to the project, to the infrastructure that's in each of these proposals, basically doing our due diligence for each one of these. And then also, we are working on our operational modeling and then our financial modeling. And we hope to have a recommendation before Town Council of our preferred providers in November. So with that, I'd like to field any questions?
Okay, I'll go ahead and open this up to Council and the Commission. Are there, there any questions for Heather regarding this? Councilman Hemmerman?
Yeah, Heather, in the past, we had talked about making sure that we, two things. One, that we're very open and that anybody and everybody that's interested in understanding our decision-making process has access to that. So I'd like you to comment on that. And then also, we had also talked about making sure that we, or, or that we consider having some kind of public, further public meetings so that the public has opportunity to ask questions, be informed, get educated and so forth with the decision-making process and the decision itself. So would you just comment on both of those?
Councilman Hemmerman, I, I'll take that one. So what we talked about a few weeks ago was trying to develop a process to get more public input. And so we're still working with, with our community relations folks to how to do that. It's not as, it's not as simple as going out to the different areas of town and sitting down, talking about a proposal, we're actually trying to compare four. So we haven't solidified that. We'll, we'll be talking about that when, next week, when our assistant town, our deputy town manager returns. But the idea is to get in front of the public often. And so again, November is a time that we hope to get in front of you. Again, it may or may not be a recommendation, but it's a touch point. Here's our thinking, here's our concerns, want to make sure you're on the same page as we are. We think it's important that council, because this is complicated stuff, council gets polled along with staff as we, as we learn and, and do things. We have been pushing hard to try to get this done by first of November. Those schedules are no longer there. We are working at our own pace and I, I think if we get a recommendation in front of council, it'd probably be the end of the year, early next year.
And can I add one thing? Also, we have each of the four proposals posted on our website for review for, for anybody out there. And also, we've, Community Relations has helped us put out, what do we call them?
Postcards.
Yeah, postcards, notice to the public in forms of press releases and on Facebook and Twitter, notifying the public of these presentations in, in hopes of getting the public here.
Is there a question? Councilman Prokopio?
When we left here the other day, we left some very specific guidance to you all. We said we wanted to have a uniform, independent analysis and you may have that, I don't know. The second thing we said was that we wanted to have town meetings before you came to council with a recommendation. And I see no necessity of being back here by 1 November, 15 November, or anything like that. Let's do the thing right. We have, we're talking about a 100 to $200 million job that's intergenerational, it's going to be an expense that goes on to the young people that are following behind us. So let's take our time and do it right.
I think my understanding, Ron, if I heard you correctly, didn't you say it'd be December or after the first of the year before we?
That is correct. We, we really do not have a schedule that this has to be in front of Town Council, but we, and we will most certainly do a council as a request and get this out and talk about in the public and allow council and the public to ask questions. We just haven't figured out the format of that. So we know we'll be touching base with you again in November, but again, we think it's important. Council, here's what we're thinking and doing, but we are working on the format of going to the public. So that, we, we will comply with the request to council that this be, that there'll be public meetings to discuss this.
Let me refine what I said. I want to refine something. What we also did say was that we wanted to have all four bidders' analysis presented to the townspeople and get their comments back. And that's what I thought we agreed to, that, and so as you, as one of you said, and I think it might have been you, Ron, that, that you didn't want the independent bidders be giving their presentation, you were going to give all four presentations and the bidders were going to be invited, but not necessarily giving the presentations.
We, well, we, what we told council, my recollection is, we will come back to you with how we think that should happen. We have not figured that out. That is not, currently, we can't figure out how to make that conducive to a public meeting, but we will, we are working on it and we will come back to council with those type of ideas to let you know what we're doing.
Yeah, I, I think, Joe, as I recall, I, I don't know if we necessarily as a council agreed to have the four independent presenters present to the public. I, I don't remember that, that way. I don't know if, if anybody else remembers it that way. We, we can go back and look at the minutes.
I'll go back and review the, the video.
Okay.
But I'm almost sure that's what we said.
Yeah, but my understanding was that we were going to have Ron and, and his crew kind of refine each of them to, to make it an apples-to-apples comparison.
Yeah, and give those presentations to the town.
Right, right, right.
And get feedback from the town on, know their questions, so we have additional questions, a different, a different maybe feel from the citizens of the town of what they're looking for and start building our case if we're going to move towards a valid issue.
Right, right. But, but that didn't necessarily mean that the, the four presenters were going to give their presentations again to the public, that they were going to be refined into something that maybe layman like myself could understand.
We were going to give four presentations.
Right.
That was my recollection. Okay, I have no problem with that, that's what I'm shooting for. And I think just putting it on the website, not many people will go to the website to read all the proposals and the analysis. So I think it has to be affordable and if they come, fine. If they don't come, that's their problem. But put it out there for the public. We suggested at least three different places where there might be town meetings, one being Town Hall, one being Founders, and one being the Meadows.
Right.
And there were, okay, go ahead.
I think that's all to be decided upon and then they'll, they'll present that back to us and we can decide whether that's acceptable or not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, perfect. Mr. Stevens, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I think you did. So I, my recollection is that the council wanted us to come back and talk with the council about different ideas on how to get further public input and present information and analysis. I don't believe the majority, although Councilman Prokopio had specific things that he recommended that we do, that that was not what the majority of the council said. The council didn't make any decisions about neighborhood meetings or other presentations. They just set a goal or an expectation that we would have additional public opportunities before a final decision was made and, and the specifics of what those would be have not been decided yet and as Mr. Redd said, we're working on ideas to come back and talk to council. So I just need to clarify that that, that is the case, otherwise I think I missed a meeting.
Yeah, that's how you would call it as well. Okay.
I just want to take exception with something you said, that you didn't think it was the majority of the council. We did not take a vote and when I spoke, that was the last response that you got and we got feedback that seemed to go along with that. So I don't think anybody had anything more to say after that. So I still think that that's what's on the table.
Right, so my, my understanding is that at this point, that Ron, you, you and your crew will do, come back with a kind of a layout or a format of how we'll present it to the public and then as a council, where we can take a look at it and decide if that meets the.
That's exactly what I wanted.
The criteria, okay?
That is correct.
Okay, great, great. Any other questions or comments from the commissioners or council regarding this? Okay, this is a public hearing, I will go ahead and open it up to the public if anyone would like to comment on this issue. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing and we'll bring it back to council. And I, I think it's just a matter of kind of following up on, on the, the format in that presentation.
Absolutely.
Does that make, make sense? Is everyone in agreement that that, the way to go?
Thank you.
We'll be bringing ideas forward to you for you guys to consider and how to take this to the public.
Right, and we would expect those in the November timeframe?
No, no, I think, I think we hopefully will have a plan by next week and then we'll, we'll schedule some time from council soon after.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you very much, Heather. Thank you so much for the presentation, we appreciate it.